Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray is absent. Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Pete Festerson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands for which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to take this moment to let the people of Gretna know that we share in their grief over the terrible tragedy over the last week or two in that community. And with those families, a number of us have teenage kids as well, so it just breaks your heart to see what happened. And I want them all to know that our thoughts and prayers are with the families of Addison Pfeiffer and Alexandria Benardi and Chloe Odermet and Abigail Barth. And we wish the speedy recovery for Rowan Brandon and of course, our first responders that were involved in the accident too, that I know that has a big impact on. I also want to note the passing of a Nebraska state trooper in a tragic accident as well. Our hearts and prayers are with him and his family as well. And in noting these things, I want to continue to urge everyone to have a safe summer, be cautious, be careful on our roads, and hope that the rest of the summer goes out without any more tragedy in this community because we've certainly had enough in the last couple of weeks. Thank you, Mr. President.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the East Wall legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we ask that you please turn off or silence your phones. This time, before we begin our official business, we have a proclamation. Councilmember Melton?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would love to call the Reeve family up. If you want to just come up to the podium, and everybody can come. We're doing this proclamation, I think as everyone knows, just about a week ago, Gerda's announced closing down. And it was about a year ago when Gerda passed away. Gerda's is kind of like an iconic place, right about 52nd and Leavenworth. I know I lived at 56th and Leavenworth during law school and my two kids had many of meals down at Gerda's because I didn't have time to cook for them. And in that time, I fell in love with not just the food, but the owner herself. And then I happened to get to know Kim, her daughter, as well, because I grew up with her husband, Pat, so we've known each other for many, many years. And another funny story is when I was pregnant with my 12-year-old, about the same age as you, I worked at the county attorney's office and so for lunch, I would call Gerda's ahead of time and I go, "I need three orders of Spats. I'll go ahead and just put it all in one container." And that was one of my cravings that I had. And to this day, he loves the noodles as well. So with that, I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas Gerda Elizabeth Kaiser was born January 2nd, 1935, in Ossberg, Germany. And whereas Gerda married John Bailey and the couple moved to the United States in 1963 with their two sons, Peter and Carl. And whereas, while living in North Carolina, Gerda became a naturalized citizen. And whereas, after a divorce and remarriage, Gerda moved to Bellevue, Nebraska and adopted her daughter Kimberly. And whereas, Gerda built lifelong skills and formed enduring friendships while working at Eminger's Bakery and Rotella's Bakery. And whereas, in 1976, Gerda purchased Downs Bakery, which would later become Gerda's Bakery in 1982. And whereas, Gerda believed in enjoying life, appreciating the simple things, taking care of those around her, including her grandkids, and hard work. And whereas, Gerda's restaurant was a place of comfort, joy, and good food, serving the Omaha community for over 40 years. Now therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Omaha declares Thursday, June 20th, 2019, Gerda Bailey Day. Official proclamation with the Seal of Omaha, signed by all of the council members because we all appreciated the contributions Gerda made to the City of Omaha.
Item 6 to 8 can be considered together for West Farm Re-Plat 4 located southeast of 150th Street and White Cliff Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 6, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for West Farm Re-Plat 4. Item 7, a resolution to approve the final plat for West Farm Re-Plat 4. Item 8, a resolution to approve the West Farm Re-Plat 4 subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items 6 through 8 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Joe Flaxbeard, Lampard Neerson, 14710 West Dodge Road. On behalf of the applicant, Re-Plat 4 is a minor replat, taking some of the original larger lots that were originally platted for the West Farm development. Starting to split those out into smaller lots for development. This one being driven by an office development in that area. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. Item 6 through 8 are approved, 6 to 0. Item 9, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of MCC Overly District to incorporate into that district the property located at 617 and 707 North 204th Avenue Circle. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 9 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. Item 9 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 10, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of MCC Overly District to incorporate into that district the property located at 1225 and 1303 North 205th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B is communication in opposition.
The public hearing on item 10 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. Item 10 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 11, an ordinance to rezone property located at 2226 N Street from R7 District and BD. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item 11 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Darren Smith, Archicon Development, 509 Walker, Woodbine, Iowa. Here on behalf of the owner and as developer, to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. Item 11 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 12, a resolution to approve the Quality Refrigerated Services III Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 4115 South 33rd Street in an amount up to $525,000.
The public hearing on item 12 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Before you again is the Quality Refrigerated Services Number Three TIF Redevelopment Project Plan. This particular project is located in an area that is HI Zone, heavy industrial, so it's bounded, this blue shaded area, bounded by rail to the west and to the east, accessible by 33rd Street only into this area, and then elevated F Street. So this is the general area we're talking about. The existing current business, which is celebrating its 30th anniversary this year, and it's a local operator, this is their existing property. They did come to us for TIF back in the late 90s, about '99, for a first expansion at this particular site. And then a second expansion, both of those TIFs have paid off. And this particular opportunity was presented to the developer, the owners, about a year ago when the bone processing facility was vacated and it was an opportunity for this business to expand to the east, thereby expanding their refrigerated warehouse operations. By expanding their refrigerated warehouse, cooler and freezer over here, that does also free up some new meat processing space in the existing building. So overall, they're going to be able to expand their operations and increase jobs by about six full-time equivalent. So again, the amount of the TIF is up to 525,000. That happens to represent about 7.7% of the total funding. It's a 33,700 square foot addition. And here, let's see if I can do this this way. So again, this is the existing site. And the boundaries are kind of lightly here of the expanded warehouse. So it will be added on to the east of the existing building. Again, 33,700 square feet. The entire space will not be developed. They're only going to develop the amount of space that they need for the cold storage. And then as they need more space, they will at least have that to, or excuse me. They bought the entire site, but only this site piece will be developed. With that, the TIF committee has given their approval. It does meet our TIF guidelines. And Keith McCormick, the CFO, is here if you should have further questions. And this is the site plan. Sorry. It's been a while since I've been here.
Mr. McCormick, how could we not have you come down after so many years in business and at least acknowledge your investment in our city and the jobs that your business provides? Welcome.
Keith McCormick, 3301 G Street Quality Refrigerated Services. And thank you very much. And I would like to say this is our third TIF application in the history of the company. And when we started in Omaha, we had 10 employees. As of Friday, we had 117. So we're thinking that there's, the TIF has generated not only jobs, but a tax base. We took an abandoned kill facility and turned it into a cold storage facility with meat processing. And thanks to your help, we appreciate it. I'm here to answer any questions anyone might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Just as a proponent, sorry, Bridget Hadley Planning, I forgot to say I would like to ask for your approval.
Glad you got that in, just in the nick of time. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. Item 6 is approved. Or item 12 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 13, a resolution to approve the Saddle Creek at Davenport Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located east of Saddle Creek between Davenport and Wakely Streets in an amount up to $532,500.
The public hearing on item 13 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Guys, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This TIF project is located along Saddle Creek, a few blocks north of Dodge, between Wakely and Davenport. It is an assemblage of 10 parcels. Took some time to get that all together. Get right here, including five single-family properties. For orientation, this is Walmart, Walgreens, Ace Hardware, Saddle Creek. The site will be cleared and three new buildings constructed. There'll be two commercial retail buildings fronting Saddle Creek and a set of five for-sale market-rate row homes, residential use kind of at the east end of the site so the site can transition into the neighborhood to the east. The larger of the two commercial buildings is about 5,000 square feet. It's on the north end of the site. Be likely be a two-tenant building. The smaller of the commercial buildings is about 2,300 square feet. And they have a Chipotle leased or interested in the site property. This is a elevation of the row homes. They picked up on some of the elements of the neighborhood as far as the dormers and the columns. So it looks like it'll fit in fairly well. Total project cost is estimated at more than $6.2 million. The TIF request is for $532,500. The developers, Omnicorp Saddle Creek LLC, managers Kirk Hampson, Derek Hicks, Jared Hollinger, and Keely Sendalar. This project meets the criteria for the TIF program. It's an appropriate use for the area and it complies with the goals of the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard? Ms. Ringenberg.
Good afternoon. Kendra Ringenberg, 9500 West Dodge Road. I'm here on behalf of the developer. I did want to add just one note on this. When we originally started this process, it was just going to be two commercial buildings. And after working with the city planning, we added a residential component, which I think is in the best interest of everybody. But I just wanted to point out that this has been a really long process and that that was, the final result was to add in some multifamily. That'll be helpful. And to note that it, you said it would be for sale. It could be for sale, it could also be for rent. We've structured it in a way that we could do either, depending on the needs in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Oh, Mr. Store.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I believe I know that neighborhood fairly well. There's some pretty tall apartment units going up, up above the Walmart out there. And I'm not sure, but I think I heard someone say one of the commercial buildings in this would be a hardware store. We have a very nice hardware store right across the street. I don't know that competition is necessary. But I also wonder, moving the nursery may not be that detrimental. However, if all of these similar complexes that are going up all over Omaha, and I've been driving around a lot of Omaha, if we don't bring enough young people in here or enough people retire, we're going to have a lot of vacant apartments. Another big, large one going there, taking up more skyline, won't be able to see the cathedral anymore from Saddle Creek. So I wonder why, at my expense, out of my pocket, somehow, through property taxes, one way or the other, that we have to keep doing this. Things have been pretty good there lately. So think twice about keeping on this TIF thing because it's not necessarily good for everybody and for all time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents wishing to be heard?
Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. I want to have a broader discussion right now because this is coming from the state.
You can, you can talk about the agenda item.
The TIF, right.
This item.
The TIF is coming from the state?
No, it's not. So you talk about this topic.
The process of getting the TIF is coming from the state.
Mr. Jimenez, excuse me, you either keep your comments addressed to this topic or you will be declared out of order and escorted from the chamber.
Okay, so my question, since it's coming from the state.
Under the rules, you're not to ask questions of the council.
Would be my comment, is that how are you guys increasing incomes and decreasing costs when you work on the TIF? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. Item 13 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 14, an application to consider a Class CG liquor license for infusion brewing Little Bohemia Beer Hall located at 1406 South 13th Street. A is communication from the Planning Department regarding building permits and right-of-way lease.
The public hearing on item 14 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, William Buburick, 7905 South 45th Avenue, Bellevue, Nebraska. President Half Full Inc. Infusion Brewing Company.
And Candace Gladwin, 4802 Capitol Avenue, Omaha. I handle all the events.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just say, I just wanted to note the success of your business in Benson. And you know, this is the second one we've had recently, a successful business spreading the love here on South 13th Street. So I know it's another hot part of town that is developing rapidly and has a lot of potential as well. So we appreciate your involvement in both areas. And I believe this is Councilman Jerem's district. He probably can't make a motion, so I'll make it for him. So I motion to approve pending the lease and pending the permits.
Second, the right-of-way lease, right. Any further lights? Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. Item 14 is approved, 6 to 0.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Item 15, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for the Alice located at 17070 Wright Plaza.
The public hearing on item 15 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Ethan Bondalid, 6810 Underwood Avenue. This is for a cocktail bar, high-end cocktail bar located in West Omaha. This will be my fifth liquor license. So here to answer any questions I might have.
Welcome. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. Item 15 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 16, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for the Maple Athletic Complex located at 4718 North 120th Street.
The public hearing on item 16 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Jeff Jackson with the Maple Athletic Complex at 4718 North 120th, formerly the Indoor Tennis and Soccer Club. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. Item 16 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 17, an application to consider a change of location request for M Salon and Day Spa's Class I liquor license currently located at 2073 North 120th Street to be located at 10160 Maple Street.
The public hearing on item 17 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Margaret DeGagnon, Waterloo, Nebraska. I'm the president of Maggeter Incorporated.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Public hearing is closed. I'm sorry, are any opponents? Public hearing is closed. And we have a motion, a second. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. Item 17 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 18, an application to consider a special designated liquor license for the Maha Music Festival at Stinson Park at Exarban Village located at 6707 Center Street on Friday, August 16th, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. to midnight, and Saturday, August 17th, 2019, from 1:00 p.m. to midnight with music until midnight each night.
The public hearing on item 18 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Emily Cox, the Operations Manager for Maha Music Festival, 5307 Newport Avenue.
Lauren Martin, Executive Director, 405 Martin Drive in Bellevue. We're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. Item 18 is approved, 6 to 0. Consent Agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearings on agenda items 19 and 20 were held on June 18, 2019. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. 19 and 20 are approved, 6 to 0.
The public hearings on agenda items 21 through 43 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent.
Good afternoon. I'm Rachel McCray. I am addressing item number 24. I'm the owner of The Corner Kick. My address is 17057 Weir Street. I'm just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. 21 through 43 are approved, 6 to 0. Item 44, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 23 of the Omaha Municipal Code to reflect changes for the administrative and executive classifications for the years 2018, 2019, and 2020. Personnel Board recommends denial.
The public hearing on item 44 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Oh, there's, the public hearing is closed.
Oh, it's a vote today.
Yep.
Second, roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. 44 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 45, an ordinance vacating alleys in Hillcrest Edition and Lot 2 Jones Street Edition. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 45 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
One public hearing will be held for items 46 and 47, ordinances to approve contracts with Westside Community Schools and Millard Public Schools to provide one police officer in marked police car to perform police work at the district's property during the regular school year from August 14th, 2019, and ending at the close of the 2021 and 2022 school year at the following locations. Westside High School located at 87th and Pacific Street. Westside Middle School located at 8601 Arbor Street. Millard North High School located at 1010 South 144th Street. Millard South High School located at 14905 Q Street. Millard West High School located at 5710 South 176th Avenue.
The public hearing on items 46 and 47 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents?
Mark Bundrosik, 211 South 37th Street. I think if we've gotten to the point where we need police in schools, then we've got a whole lot of other problems that we need to deal with first before we start spending more money on putting police officers with guns in schools. I don't think we need people with guns in schools. I think we need to be doing a lot more to solve the problems that this supposedly fixes than we need to ever spend money on putting police officers in public schools.
Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls.
I was going to go to more dialogue, but after hearing the comment that I just heard, I'm going to let the other thing slide. But I am going to say, on January 5th, 2011, an assistant principal at Millard South was sitting at her desk. She was shot multiple times. Earlier today, she had dismissed a student for something that he had done earlier that day. He came back in, made an appointment, and he went in there. And like I say, he shot her multiple times and she died later in the hospital. In that same building, the high school principal came running down the hall, not away from it, but to it. And he was shot, and to be honest, he was shot in the chest and also in the hip. He did survive. After he recovered, he went back for a while. Then I found out that later on, he still works for that school system, but not in the capacity of his school administrator. It's probably because of the things that did happen to him. I think some people don't realize that some of these high schools are larger than the majority of the towns in the state of Nebraska because they run 2,000 to 26, 2700, young men and women. So you can see at that age level, there is a lot of distress because if you can recall when you were growing up, as I do, that's a time in life you're trying to find yourself. And with today's society, it's how complex it is to live now as compared to when I was that age. And at that time, I thought it was difficult. Because at that time, to be honest with you, I went to a small town and I did not do this, but a lot of the pickup trucks in the small town, they had their gun racks on the back of the truck. but a lot of the pickup trucks in the small town, they had their gun racks on the back of the trucks because life was different. It's not different now. I mean, it's a lot different now. So I hear what you're saying that costs some money, but there have been too many school shootings throughout the United States. And right, I disagree with arming a administrator or teacher, although some states have said that. And I think there's been some state senator in the state of Nebraska that suggested we do that. But then I look at the life that a police officer lives, and they're trained to do that, and they even make mistakes at times. And they're trained, and that's our life. So those people who work in schools, I don't know how well-trained you are, but your focus is not necessarily on that. So I do believe that we do need these. And I've always been curious because of the number of hours, because it's seven and a half hour day. And I personally don't think that necessarily covers the total school day because a lot of things go in the evening. And I do know some of the officers do come back. So I have the total support of this. And the school district does pay those salaries during that period of time that the, I think it starts, it says, August of 14. I'm going in this longer than I anticipated because I had some other questions to do until the end of the school year. And then in summer school. And if you don't believe me, life is different out there right now. So and it, the schools are a reflection of what goes on out in the neighborhoods. So I'm full, full support of having police in there. But yes, that's quarter of a million dollars that, like I say, Miller will be spending, and you wish they didn't have to. But it's not the way the society is going right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton.
Yes, and I wanted to make a quick comment, too. Having these police officers there, and I understand that they're armed, but one of the functions that these officers provide is they get to know the students. They're not just there with their guns to make sure their, the kids are behaving. They actually engage. I mean, this is part of the, the community policing that's going on. So these officers get to know the students. The students get to know the officers. There have been occasions where students have had problems and issues, and they, because they know these officers in the school, they're able to go to the officers. So they're developing, the kids and the officers in these schools are developing relationships. They're not, the police officers aren't standing there as guards. They truly are interacting with the kids. And I think that's probably one of the most important things that I think, and I know our chief is sitting over there, but one of the best things that I think the Omaha Police Department has done is engage in, in the community policing and getting to know the people that they're protecting. And so that's why I think this is absolutely an essential part of, for these high schools. I wish the, I wish some of the private schools would engage in this and pay for officers to come into their schools as well because, you know, this could happen at, you know, problems could happen in any school. But also, I think that some of the private schools are missing out on getting to know the good officers and what police officers really do. So I'm, I'm in full support of this, but not just for the protection of our students, but the message that it's sending and the respect. I think it's teaching students for law enforcement, and then also law enforcement, getting to know the kids that they're, they're out there protecting. So for those additional reasons, I fully support it. And I want to thank the Omaha Police Department for their willingness to engage in this with us.
Thank you. Next item.
One public hearing will be held for Items 48 and 49, ordinances to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by changing the title of the class specifications of Parking Manager to Parking and Mobility Manager with no change in salary range, and by adding the employment classification of Assistant Parking and Mobility Manager with a salary range of 23.1 MC. Personnel Board recommends approval.
The public hearing on Items 48 and 49 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Ken Smith, Public Works Division, here to answer any questions.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
One public hearing will be held for Items 50 to 52 for the 2019 Annexation Package. Ordnances to Annex SID 467 Ranch View Estates and SID 556 Ranch View Estates 3 located south at 204th Street and Pacific Street in adjacent areas. SID 496 The Willows located northwest of 168th Street and Blondo Street in an adjacent area. SID 443 Stone Creek Plaza located southwest of 156th Street and Fort Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on Items 50 through 52 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, Omaha Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham Street, Suite 300. And on behalf of Mayor Stauffer, I just wanted to take the opportunity and introduce this year's annexation package. Spend just a few minutes just kind of touching on some of the highlights. I know we've briefed you all on the contents of this annexation package before today, but for the general public and the listening audience, we'll just kind of touch on a few things. Number one, you know, this is a process that we go through every year. We have a few goals. One, we want to try to eliminate islands that exist within the city's corporate limits. Two, the, the package must be revenue positive for the city. And number three, we do not want the annexation package to compromise public safety. Although there are no islands that are eliminated in this year's annexation package, that is obviously one of the goals and objectives as we evaluate various SIDs and adjoining areas to be annexed. We begin with a very systematic analytical evaluation. We began with a comprehensive list of about 132 SIDs. We do this every year. We start eliminating those SIDs based on things like their levy, their debt, their debt ratio, so on and so forth. We get down to a shortlist. This year, that shortlist was about 36 SIDs in adjoining areas. We then get information provided to us by legal counsel, other city departments, outside consultants. And we then eliminated various SIDs that were not going to be net positive for the annexation package. We got down to 12 SIDs for what we call a full-service evaluation, and that's when we send it out to each of the departments. We get a 10-year projection on what we anticipate the costs will be to provide essential city services to these areas. As a result of that full-service evaluation, there are four areas that are being proposed for annexation this year totaling approximately 246, excuse me, acres of land. These are a combination of residential and commercial office. It includes Stone Creek Plaza, Ranch View Estates and the adjacent areas, The Willows and their adjacent areas, and Ranch View Estates 3. The package is a fairly small package. It only brings in approximately 955 new residents. This information is based on the 2010 census. Puts our population estimate around 476,619, maintaining the city of Omaha as one of the top 40 cities in the nation. The city will see an increase of approximately $155 million in new valuation. I won't go into a lot of the costs and financial projections. All of that information has been provided to you. That information is available, and I can go into it if you want, but otherwise, it gets pretty boring to talk about a lot of those numbers. But this is a net positive package. Public safety will not be compromised. We do have a Chief of Police and Chief of Fire here that will testify as well here in a moment, so I won't steal any of their thunder. From a parks perspective, there are actually zero acres of parkland. Initially, we had thought there was going to be about eight acres of parkland. That property will remain private under private ownership and will remain privately, so at the end of the day, there is no public parkland that's being annexed as part of this package. From a public works perspective, there are 14 lane miles that are being added to the city's corporate limits, and those 14 lane miles were built in accordance with current city standards, and therefore subsequently will be, continue to be maintained as such by the city's Public Works Department. Following annexation, following your vote, we're requesting recommendation of approval. Following your vote, the city will be providing all of those essential city services, including solid waste removal and snow removal in the winter. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions at this time, but otherwise, that concludes our report. Concede to the next.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Welcome, Chief.
Good afternoon in the council. Todd Schmader, Chief of Police, City of Omaha, 505 South 15th Street. Just want to give a brief recommendation for this annexation, a statement of support. It is a small annexation package, and the Omaha Police Department has been a part of the discussions pretty much the entire way through so we can weigh in on the need for police services. With less than 1,000 people annexed in this small package, and in light of the new 5th precinct, which is going to open in September 2019, I am confident the patrol policing coverage is going to be quality. Most of these annexed areas will actually fall within the boundaries of the 5th precinct. So with that being said, I firmly believe it's either going to be quality or even better than what they're getting now just because it's going to fall within those boundaries. We talk about patrol coverage. There's another area of public safety that we don't often get into when it comes to annexations, but it's present for the residents on day one. And that is they will have the entire services of the Criminal Investigations Bureau, the Forensic Services Unit, Traffic Unit, Helicopter Unit, Crime Prevention Services, Emergency Services, such as our SWAT team, that are only in place with the Omaha Police Department. So they'll gain that on day one, and I'm going to stick around. I'll be available for any questions the council may have, and thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Chief Olson. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon. Dan Olson, Omaha Fire Chief, 1516 Jackson Street. I'm also here to speak as a proponent to the annexation package. Very similar to the Police Department, the Omaha Fire Department prides itself on the, providing the highest level of service in the fire and EMS capacities to the citizens we serve. With that said, I wanted you to, to know that the Omaha Fire Department is currently and has for many years served the four neighborhoods that we're considering for annexation in this package. So we're already providing the highest level of service available in this region to the, the residents that live within the SIDs. I thought it'd be important to mention that, as you're aware, the Omaha Fire Department's recently been awarded the rating of number one in, in the insurance services industry. And that number one rating includes an assessment of many categories, that being placement of our apparatus, the number of staffing members on those apparatus, our communications capabilities, and many, many other layers, our water supply capabilities, many, 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 many other layers of the services that we provide. During that assessment, I'm happy to report that the neighborhoods that are being considered and recommended in this annexation package were considered. So we're covered there. They are also considered in the Omaha Fire Department's 25-year optimization build-out plan. So our master plan going forward, you're all aware of that plan as well. So we're confident that we can continue to provide the highest level of services available in this region to the four neighborhoods. And I am also available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. My comments are directed to the people out west that I am opposed to your process, procedures, and arrangements to annex more land within the city limits. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this package is smaller than the ones I've seen before me, so I'll keep my comments brief as well. I understand why we annex, and it's a luxury we have in Omaha. But eventually, like I've said in the past, the rubber will meet the road, and, and somebody's going to be left out. And eventually, we're going to run out of land to annex. But in, in the process, as we continue to pick up areas that we have to service, and, and of course, one of the luxuries in this package is that we already are in this area for the police and fire. But it doesn't mean that we won't have more residents to get to for emergencies. So we, we still will have that added need placed on us. And of course, public safety is the most important thing for us. And I want to thank Mr. Anderson and everybody that put this package together. This isn't something I've not said before, so you've heard it. I know it's no easy task. We don't just take a mark or two aboard and say, we're taking this area. I mean, there's, there's a reason. These SIDs are either, you know, negative or they're positive. You put the package together, you bring it forward. Obviously, you get everybody's input. But there's, there's a part of it this year, and it really stings a little bit because although many of the people in this room have heard it time and time again, there'll be some people out there that'll say, why? Why would you take on more than we can handle now? And we all know why we do it. I mean, you know, like I said before, it's a luxury we have. But you can easily get on the mayor's website, which I just did recently, and you can look at some of the complaints, and these are the complaints we get all throughout the year. And it's not a small number. I mean, we heard that we're taking no parks in this particular package, and that's good. We know employees are hard to find all across the board, but even adding 14 lane miles of road, it's still extra road. And it's tough to say, let's take on this extra road if we can't take care of what we have. And in May, and this is the mayor's hotline, we know there's a lot more people that complain. I still hit potholes, and well, maybe we're just all getting used to them, and I don't complain about them. But we had over 4,000 in May, and if you go back to April, there was 13,000. And if you go back to March, there was 15,000. Now, this isn't the, the normal complaints we'll see, and we get a weekly report of the different complaints. This is just lane miles and road problems we have. So again, I know why we annex. I know it's a smaller package. I understand it's a luxury we have. But we can't just sit back and say, it's okay. We can do this. Because we're here, and we don't need to add any more employees, but do we have enough employees for what we have now? And, and that's the gist of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a question for either Troy or Mr. Stube. I think it was covered in my briefing, but I just can't recall the precise answer to it. And I ask because I do think streets are the biggest challenge we have in the city right now. And on The Willows, under the, under the paperwork in the, on the agenda and in the, I'm sure on the website, diagram shows that 168th and Blondo Streets are, aren't entirely complete, but I think that is occurring or has occurred. Is that accurate to say?
That's correct. As part of the information that we provided you all, 168th Street was a project that was, in fact, I think it's nearing construction. There was a section of Blondo that's adjacent to The Willows that was part of that 168th Street improvement. And again, yes, that's nearing completion. If it's not completed already, and therefore, that doesn't have an impact on The Willows SID sort of fiscal position that was already accounted for when we did the 168th Street project.
Okay, thank you. And was that completed by the city or the county, or was that a cost share, or how did that work?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So 168th Street from Dodge to Maple was managed essentially by the city, but funding came from not only the city, but also from the county.
Okay. And your information is the same, Bob, in terms of it being complete as this annexation occurs?
Yeah, it's essentially completed. I don't think the project has been closed out yet, but majority of the work has been completed, and I think they're still doing what we would call punch list items.
Great, thank you. Obviously, that would be a major expense if it wasn't, so I just wanted to confirm. Thanks.
Thank you.
Non-action items. Items 53 through 84 do not require public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President. Motion passed, six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 2:48.